It is 5:00. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Yeah.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. This is the time when we have public comments. I don't see anyone in the audience. Therefore, I call for the Declaration of Close Session Items by City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have three items this evening. Two are existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. It is the SEC versus the City of Victorville and Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. The case number is set forth on the agenda. Item A is an Airport Authority item. Item B, which is the same litigation as the City Council item. And then we have a third item for the City Council, which is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D4, one case. And to the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the close of the closed session or at the commencement of the 6:00 regular meeting.
Thank you. We will now recess to close session, and a regular session convenes at 6:00 p.m. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. May we have close session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had three closed sessions this evening. Two were existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. It's the SEC versus City of Victorville litigation. The case numbers and parties are set forth on the agenda. One was for the City Council, one was for the Airport Authority. The third item was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D4. It's an undersealed case, and there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you. We will have the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Alex Gonzalez of Victory Outreach. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief Sam Lucia. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Thank you, council members, for the opportunity. We're going to open up tonight's council meeting in a word of prayer. If you'll bow your head and close your eyes with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord Jesus, for the opportunity that we have to gather together as leaders of the community, not only community leaders, but religious leaders and civic leaders that are here tonight, Lord. We ask for your leadership. We ask for your wisdom. Most importantly, Lord, we ask for your peace here in the City of Victorville. We know, Lord, Father, there was lives that were altered this past week. We pray for the family of the young woman that was tragically taken, the life that was tragically taken, Lord. And we just ask for the peace that surpasses all understanding. We pray for our leaders, our city leaders, our civic leaders. Give them your mind, give them your heart, give them your wisdom. Help them to lead the city in the right direction, Lord. And we thank you so very much, Father God, because we know that, Lord, we live in a beautiful city, God, in the greatest country in the world, and we thank you for that today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen.
One is former Mayor Cox, and the second one is former Mayor McCochrane. And as you can see over here, too, I guess it would be your left, those are the two new portraits that we have. They served the city with a lot of pride, and they did an excellent job, and I'm very thankful for them, and I'm glad that they're still with us. Thank you both.
Mayor Garcia, there is one more presentation, the Certificate of Recognition for the Excelsior Charter School baseball team?
You're correct. I lost my place. Thank you so much. We have two presentations. The first one will be, well, it's one presentation recognizing the CIF State Southern Section Division Champions Excelsior Charter School Baseball Team. Is that the only one that I have?
That is on the table out front for you to present, Mayor Garcia.
I'm guessing the baseball team may be in the foyer.
Yeah, we may need to get them in here.
I think that's the baseball team.
For the Certificate of Recognition to Excelsior Eagles Baseball, would Baron Wilson please come up, come forward? I'm sorry? He's not here this evening? Is this the team? Wonderful. On behalf of the City Council, we would like to present you with this Certificate of Recognition to acknowledge the Excelsior Eagles Baseball Team's achievement in becoming the 2015 CIF State Southern Section Division Champions. May we have an applause, please? I know this is quite an honor, and you work hard for it. I had two sons, so I know how proud parents can be. Would you like to say a few words? Not a problem. They just know how to play baseball. This is the Certificate of Recognition. This Certificate of Recognition is presented to Excelsior Eagles Baseball, 2015 CIF State Southern Section Division Champions.
I just want to thank all the parents for supporting our team out there, and thank the players. They fought hard, they did a really good job, won and lost two games during the season. And like I told them on the, our championship game, there's people that wish it could happen, want it to happen, but these guys made it happen. They're all champions, and we get to say that we're number one for the whole year. Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda, we have the appeals hearing, and we have item A1. At this time, I open the appeal hearing, and I will take testimony and read cards. I believe I do have some here. The first one that I have is Mark Ostich. Hope I pronounced your name right.
Close enough. Mark Ostich, 550 East Hospitality Lane, San Bernardino. I'm actually here this evening to ask a continuance, and I'll explain why in a moment. If you prefer that I sit down and ask for the continuance at the end, I will, or I can do it now.
It'd be fine to hear it now, and it'll be part of the public hearing, and I assume hopefully the council will continue it.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
And thank you. And if you don't continue the hearing, I'd like the opportunity to get up and speak to the issues. But to give you an overview, I represent Walmart stores, and Walmart operates a super center in a new shopping center at Highway 395 and Palmdale Road. It's a developing area, very, very busy center, including a significant amount of traffic activity. We support all of the development that's going on around us, and we support the development that we're appealing. There's one reason and one reason alone that we're appealing the Planning Commission's decision regarding the development that is before you this evening, and that is that we have a grave concern about the traffic conflicts that are going to result if this project is ever built. This project really depends in great part for its access on our main access drive. It does not have access off 395. All of the traffic going to this development will use our main access into the shopping center, and then there's a secondary access that some of the traffic will use. The development is going to be populated by two fast food restaurants and an inline building, which will also be allowed to have restaurant activity. So we're concerned about significant traffic that's going to be generated by this project in and around our main drive and the conflict it's going to create with Walmart's customers and the customers of other users in close proximity. We appeared before the Planning Commission and tried to express the level of concern. We've submitted quite a lot of information, and obviously, we weren't successful in being persuasive that the commission should focus on these traffic impacts more. And so what we've done is we've engaged a traffic engineer to prepare a simulation based on a real traffic study, based on current traffic counts, that will graphically demonstrate to you what we're concerned about. We're not trying to be troublemakers. We don't want to be an impediment to this center, but we feel like if this developer is going to come in and build out these restaurant uses, that it needs to be done in a way that's compatible with the existing traffic patterns. So my reason for requesting the continuance is to give us time to complete our traffic simulation, which we would then present to you at a later council meeting to make our case a little more succinctly than we have been able to. We were not able to have it completed for this evening's meeting, or we would have been here tonight with it, and I hope you'll grant the continuance. If you choose not to, I hope I'll have an opportunity to speak further this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone has. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The second card that I have on A1 is Dan Osren.
Hi. My name is Dan Osren, and I'm an architect with the applicant, Cotty Foods. And I live in 15 West Moreland, Irvine, California. I just want to make a couple of points to take you through some of the history of the project. We've been working on the project for about a year, and we've redesigned the site plan on several different occasions at the urging partly of the city staff, who wanted us to make some changes and utilize different of the existing entrance drives to solve some of their traffic concerns. So we've done all that, and we've designed the site to the satisfaction of the city, and we meet all the parking codes and ordinances and exceed the parking counts per the city ordinances. And we've recently redesigned the site to increase the number of parking spaces in our site to an even greater extent, so we exceed the code to an even higher level than we did before. So with all that being said, we feel like we're in a pretty good place. City staff is, it feels we're in a pretty good place as far as our design goes. As far as the concerns related to traffic, I wanted to just ask as a procedural matter if new information in an appeal process is allowed to be brought into the discussion with the City Council, or if the appeal was really more of a matter of appealing based on the existing information. So I just wanted to ask that question, because if Walmart is preparing a new traffic study, I'm not really sure if that's, that's just my question, how that applies.
Any questions?
Mayor Garcia, I can answer that question. Typically, on an appeal like this, the standard review is typically you look at what was before the Planning Commission to see if there was anything in connection with that process where they may have erred in their decision-making. However, on all these appeals, you basically, it's also a trial de novo, so you do have the opportunity to consider all kinds of new information if you want to. You're not limited just to the record.
And if we have new information, we do have the opportunity to send it back to the Planning Commission to reconsider their decision.
You also have that alternative as well, yes.
Is this, is this just a problem that can be solved by another driveway? I'm no traffic engineer, obviously, by that question.
It's a good question. We haven't considered it, based on the design and the existing driveways that are already easemented, and they're part of a reciprocal easement agreement between us and Walmart. So at this point, we don't have the flexibility to have a new driveway, nor does it work with our site plan, and it hasn't been something that the city's encouraged, I mean, at this Now, in relation to the traffic study that is currently, that the Plan Commission saw and heard, it was Walmart's traffic study that showed that there was no negative impacts of our traffic on their ring road. And, you know, we also produced our own traffic study, which confirmed the Walmart's traffic study, that there was no negative impacts on the center, on their road system as well. I just throw that out there, because it just seems like if there's going to be a new traffic study that somehow refutes their original study, then I would just want to make sure that, A, we have time to review it, and B, that it met the procedural guidelines for an appeal.
Now, Mayor Garcia, you have the option of asking the council if they want to continue this item. Typically, when the appellant is the one asking for a continuance, his council has always accepted that request or gone along with that request. But again, it's your decision as to whether or not you want to continue this item or not.
I have one more card. Should we hear that one first?
Absolutely. We should take all that and...
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim Goodwin?
My name is Jim Goodwin. My address is 10 Dianthus, Rancho Santa Margarita. I work for Cotty Foods, and we don't consider ourselves a developer. We are a restaurant operator. We currently have four stores in Victorville, two Taco Bells, and two Wendy's. So we're not developing this to flip it or anything else. We want to operate, and we want to do business in Victorville. A little history on this, it's been through three Planning Commission hearings, and it's been delayed. There's been documents submitted the day of the Planning Commission hearing. It gets extended, and this, we think that the Planning Commission did their job. They reviewed it thoroughly. The city engineer did his job, the city planning staff did their job, and we ask that you support their decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is the council willing to...
Mr. Ostich, maybe...
Do you have a question?
If I may be recognized?
It'd be appropriate to let Mr. Ostich speak.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to clear a couple of things up. First of all, this is not a new traffic study. We had new traffic counts done several weeks ago. We submitted them to the Planning Commission. The problem is being able to demonstrate graphically what we're speaking about, because we're projecting a condition for a project that is not yet built. Our concern is, once this project is built, if we make a mistake, we're going to have a mess that we're going to live with for a long, long time. Now, we've tried to meet with Cotty Foods on this issue, and that did not come up previously, but we have tried several times to meet with them to try to resolve these issues. We are willing to work with them to improve the site plan. As I said, we're not interested in being an impediment to what they're doing. What we're interested in is a well-designed development that'll be compatible with the other traffic generators that are already operating in that, in that location. So we're just asking for time to try to bring this to the surface in a way that's clear to everyone through the use of a simulation, to actually take the data that's already in the record and put it in a graphic that is easy to see the consequences of this project once it's built. So we appreciate the opportunity to present to you this evening, and I hope you'll grant our request for a continuance. Once this development is built, there's going to be no way to fix the problem. We think it behooves everyone, including Cotty Foods, since they claim they're an owner of this, and they will be a long-term participant. It behooves them as well to be the owner of a well-designed project that's compatible with the traffic patterns in the center. So thank you very, very much.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Could I close the panel here?
It's up to the council to keep this open. I would assume you may want to keep the hearing open unless you want to close it and take action on it tonight.
Do we want to take action tonight, or shall we continue?
From my perspective, I'm ready to continue, but I do have some comments and questions, and I think other members of the council might as well. Having previously been on the Planning Commission, understanding the question of Cotty Foods and presenting of new information, generally, the council has always sent it back to the Planning Commission. I remember that being the case when I was on the Planning Commission. The council did send it back. It's very difficult for the council to get new information on the fly and ask us to adjust to it, even if it's a simulation of something that's already been studied or presented. So from that perspective, even if you were coming forth with a simulation of something that's already been presented to the Planning Commission, I'd still want my Planning Commission to review that, because I think it's appropriate that they do so. Perhaps they come to a different decision based upon that. What's troubling to me is that the developer, the master developer of this site, and ultimately Walmart, and this user have not been able to figure out how to make this work, and how it even got to this point, and why it's even before us tonight. Quite frustrating from my perspective. I do not understand why you're even here before us tonight. Understanding the question that Mr. Kennedy had as to an additional drive in, off of either 395 or Palmdale Road, good luck with that, because that would involve Caltrans, and it took you forever to get those permits, just to get the actual ingress egress off that site as it exists now. Don't expect to get any more. I doubt it'll ever happen, and I know our city engineer, Brian Gangler, can speak to that. So I would urge all the parties involved to get together and figure this out, because, one, it should be decided upon at the Planning Commission level. Council should not be deciding this here tonight, and the thought that there would ever be any other ingress egress off that site, with Caltrans having to grant their approval, it's just not going to happen. So that's my thoughts and comments.
I would have thought somewhere when this development started, that staff would have been involved in a circulation plan, drainage plan, everything involved, because you barely, and I don't think this is the case, see a development in a center where you have independent developers getting independent permits, instructing improvements, and totally independent. It has to be a part of a major plan. Staff appears to have worked off a plan, knowing where ingress and egress should be, and it also appears that the purchaser and the developer and the later developers have reciprocal agreements, which are necessary, because each one cannot have ingress egress to a main highway. I would think, trying to read this, it would have, it would have appeared that the circulation element, the drainage plan, even the utilities, would have had to be worked out a long time ago in order for the first individual, whomever that may be, to get a permit, because in no development do you go back and start changing ingress egress or digging up lines and adding new sewers and adding new water. If that all had to be worked out, when those pads developed, the developer had to know whether we're getting the water, where sewer was going, where drainage was going, where the traffic circulation was going to happen. It made me wonder, how did we get here and still not have an agreement on those issues? And as far as I can determine, the only issue is traffic. But Mr. McEckern, from his Planning Commission experience, is correct. You're not going to get it from the state, and there's reciprocal agreements that exist, and there's some kind of an agreement that the property owners are going to have to get together and agree on, because I don't see, I agree it probably should be referred back to the Planning Commission if there's new material, but I don't see a basis. I studied this, for the council to deny this. That's all I have.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment. I'm actually very familiar with this site. Do a lot of shopping there, and, you know, we do have a city staff and a planning commission work these issues through, but from my experience, if two parties are unwilling to negotiate, you kind of know where you stand, and then that's it. What I would encourage folks to do is find recommendations. I mean, City Council's always open to recommendations, but a lot of times, we hear a lot of the problems. So tracking all the issues, tracking the history. We'd like recommendations to move ahead, and if there are none, so state. But again, Planning Commission and City Staff, hopefully, they can work it out there, and it'll be a non-issue.
Mayor, personally, I'm fine with continuing this item, but I don't want to continue it back to the council. The only reason I think we should continue it is if the Planning Commission is going to consider additional information, let them, if they think their decision needs to be revised based on additional information, how long is it going to take? The developer, I'm sure, has, would like to get his operation going.
Two to three weeks. Doing this, we just want someone to look. Lot of data, but unfortunately, data is technical, and it's difficult to interpret. I don't feel the commission really...
I think that, if we're going to continue it, I'd like to see us send it back to planning.
Madam Mayor, I know that Cotty Foods representative wants to come up and talk. I assume that's somewhat in the nature of a motion. I would second that. My, again, my issue is that, yes, it ought to go back to the Planning Commission, but before it even gets there, you all need to work things out. And please, I don't want to have a dialogue between the two of you. That's for you to do outside of this room, not here tonight. This should never have occurred. It should never have gotten to this level, and I'm still shocked and amazed that it's even here tonight. What I'm trying to suggest to you is this. I hope that it doesn't get back here, because that doesn't bode well for development at that corner, for this, this project overall. And we have all, every single one of us up here have been very supportive of that project, and for this kind of, you know, disconnect to be occurring right now is very, very troubling to me. I hope that, you know, obviously, I believe that we ought to grant the continuance, allow you to show the commission the traffic models that you want to show them. Perhaps that would change their mind, perhaps it won't, but I want to give our commission the ability to... the ability to review that and make that decision. But at the end of the day, if this ends up back before us, I'm going to be very disappointed. I think you guys need to work this out before it would ever come back to us.
Prior to the vote, I have a question of the attorney. If this council leaves the public hearing open and refers the matter back on a technical matter to the Planning Commission, Planning Commission isn't required to advertise and have another hearing, are they?
They would be, well, that's a very good question. Depends on the information. I don't think they would need to do that based on this information. It's just going to be supplementary information.
If they make the determination after looking at the information that it's really not new or not in an arena that they haven't already considered, they have no reason to have a hearing on it. They can simply refer it right back to the council.
Right back to the council, right. And as I understand it, your motion is probably to continue the matter until such time as the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to review any additional information.
That's my understanding, that this matter is technically still in front of the council. It's simply referred back for a recommendation. That forthcoming, we would continue the public hearing then as soon as possible.
Right, with the hope being that either the parties can get it resolved before then, or the Planning Commission can give some more information on it.
So this would be continued to the July 21st, 2015 meeting, then?
That's assuming you don't have a meeting on July 7th, which hasn't been decided yet. I believe the commission meeting is July 8th.
Affirmative.
Makes sense. I don't know if you want to hear from Cotty Foods as to what that timing does to them.
Set a deadline and make everybody...
I mean, it's been a long time. We'd like to get our project approved, but I do want to address the comment. We did reach out to Walmart back in the fall, and we were trying to work with them in relation specifically to the entrance drives, and we were rejected at that time.
That's not true because I was the first to...
My point to you both was not to do this in this room.
I did want to address just that one comment.
My issue is that you do it outside of this room. I do not want to get in this room. So we're willing to grant the continuance, I think, until, what is it?
July 21st?
July 21st. Hopefully, you work out your issues before then. I pray that it's not...
We're okay with the 21st. I just wanted to mention that in regards to the communication. That's all.
We have an excellent working relationship with both entities, and we want to keep it that way.
Absolutely. And that's what we were looking for in the fall as well. Thank you.
We will get it resolved.
So we have a motion and a second on the table, I think?
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Clerk, I did fail to request for you to present the agenda and revisions. Can we do that at this time, or...?
Yes, I can do that at this time, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. There are several revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. The first one is a revision to item number B1, a revised staff report to correct spelling and grammatical errors. Second one is also related to item B1. It's a revised business license fee schedule with changes highlighted in yellow. Third one is also related to item number B1. It's a letter from the California Apartment Association, a request to continue the ordinance. Item number B2 also is a revised staff report to correct spelling and grammatical errors. And item number D8 is a resume for Craig Fabrizio for consideration to appointment to the Legislative Review Committee. And those are all the revisions I have. Mayor Garcia, these have been distributed to the council and also to the public for review.
Thank you very much. We now move on to our public hearings. B1 is...
Is the time...
Yes.
The attorney has indicated that there may be two members of the council that can't participate.
That is correct. I believe both council members, Kennedy and Cox, own rental properties, and therefore, my recommendation is that they abstain from participating in this and refrain from voting on it.
The item before you tonight contains two parts. The first part is an ordinance, which adds the rental property inspection requirements to the Development Code, and the second part is a resolution, which adopts a new business license fee schedule for the entire business license structure. The ordinance for the rental property inspection involves a new requirement on rental property owners to have their properties inspected. The issue that we had with the previous ordinance is that the business license requirement, we were approving business licenses without even looking at the house to see whether they even complied with the code in terms of maintenance, landscaping, and other requirements for the property. So we have adopted this, we have brought this program before you, to you before, I call it a program then. That's what it was called when it came before, and questions were raised. I believe Ben Lamson was the one that raised questions about it being called a program and what were the goals of the program and such. And so we realized that he was right. It wasn't a program. We're looking to do requirements. These requirements will be required of any rental property in the city. Was there anything, George, is there anything else that we needed to add in terms of that? Or if you have, I don't know if you want to do this in two parts like this, or you want to move forward, or if you have any questions on that specifically, or if you just want me to go into the business license fee portion? Okay.
No, go ahead.
Okay, then tied to that is the change to business license fees. Now, like I said, the business license fees for the entire city in terms of commercial and general industrial, any business in the city, they hadn't been modified since 1971. They were, when we did a study, they're well below what it costs staff to approve a business license. So we've, we did a study, we've provided it for you tonight, and that study shows exactly what it costs, what each employee's time is on that business license, how much it costs to pay that employee and everything, and we've come up with that total. We actually modified it a little bit, modified the way and who we're going to have process those licenses so that we could bring the fee down a little bit. We did look at, do a comparison with other cities. That's included in your staff report on the pages three, four, and five. We feel it is comparable now with other jurisdictions, and it does, it will cover our costs, which I believe is the most important thing for the council. Included in those fees are the fees for the rental property inspection program. And what that is, is a new rental property that we find out there would have a set fee, and then a property, we had, we worked with the Apartment Association, which I don't believe there's a member of tonight. We spoke with them today. I know they sent a letter recommending a continuance, but we worked out the issues before you. The changes that Carol Lee mentioned, highlighted for you, are the changes we discussed with them. They were in support of those changes. They took care of the issues that they were concerned about, and they were in agreement with moving forward with this tonight. So the rental, the rental property inspection, as you know, code enforcement's out there doing proactive enforcement right now. So as we find rentals, single-family rentals, they'll be brought into the, brought into compliance with the requirements, they'll get a new business license, and we've offered the ability for regular property owners and those properties that are done through property management companies to self-certify, to use an inspection program to say that their property is in compliance with all the municipal code requirements, and therefore, they'll get a reduced rate on the renewals. So with that, we're open. Do you have any questions?
Chris, I'm just a little confused. When you mentioned, you spoke with the representatives from the California Apartment Association, and then we have what I think is the revision right here. How is that different from the original?
They pointed out the, if you look on the, maybe on one of them, you'll see the $2 per unit for 10 or more units. That's our current fee structure right now, and we were kind of moving that over into the proposed one. And clearly, that doesn't relate to the cost of providing the business license. And it, I don't know whether there was an oversight on our part or not, but they were right. The cost to provide a service for the business license didn't change based on the number of units. So we moved the $2 per unit under the renewals. We moved that up to the $80 per property. The $80 means that their property failed an inspection or had a code complaint in that year, so they're not able to self-certify themselves with a lower $40 rate. They get bumped to the $80 rate in a larger apartment complex. That means we have to go out there and do an inspection. So a larger apartment complex would then pay that $2 per unit for code enforcement to do the inspection and in compliance, and they were in support of that.
Okay, great. And typically, do they, are they in communication with you, or, I mean, just getting a letter today is kind of strange.
I understand. We've worked with them for a year and a half, two years, on this, on these inspection requirements. Very easy to work with, very knowledgeable, obviously, on the topic, and brought up a good, a lot of good ideas and changes that we took into consideration and modified in the ordinance throughout the process.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I'd like to go ahead and move the adoption...
We haven't had the public hearing yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. We haven't.
Adam Chair...
I'd like to do that before I...
May I go see if you have, open the public hearing and then see if there's any public comments?
I have to open the public hearing.
Yes.
I open the public hearing at this time, and I will take testimony, and I don't have any cards unless there is someone that wants to come up and speak. Is there anyone? There is no one, so I close the public hearing.
And I'll read the title of the ordinance, number 2333. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, adding Article 16-6.050, related to rental property inspection requirements to the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exemption.
And I can move introduction and adoption of resolution as well?
It would be to waive further reading and introduce the ordinance at this point.
But he's asking if he can do the second item, which is the resolution.
Oh, yes, yes.
You could make the same motion. So your motion would be to adopt ordinance and waive further reading and adopt the resolution.
That'll be my motion.
Close it already.
Okay, the public hearing has been closed, so then...
So there's a motion for both ordinance 2333 and resolution 15-021.
That is my motion.
Second?
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox and Mr. Kennedy absent.
Just a comment to compliment staff. I know that there was some little jockeying around this last minute on the fee schedule, but I appreciate what was done this afternoon to make that work with California Apartment Association. They had some concerns, but those were addressed, and their not being here tonight to oppose this moving forward is evidence of that, so...
Okay, then we move on to B2.
Yes, we should get council members Kennedy and Cox back. I'll leave them coming.
So we move on to item B2, replacement of imaging fee and adoption of new technology fee. And I open the public, oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. If you need it, if you don't need it, we can go right to the public hearing. I just wanted to mention, yes, I briefly mentioned this in the budget hearing, yes, this is the need for the Development Department mainly, but the entire city to adopt a new permitting software system. We currently have the Tidemark system that's been here since Kevin and I both started 14 years ago. It's outdated. They don't provide support for it. The company's been conglomerated into some other company anymore. We really need to do something. There's a lot of technological products out there that we can capitalize on, as I mentioned, the ability for residents to use apps to call in code enforcement complaints, public works issues, potholes, all those different types of things. The city currently has an imaging fee right now. We believe we can get rid of that fee and adopt a new technology fee. The imaging fee, yeah, we scan our items in there, but through this new technology, we'll be able to go paperless for a lot of the applications. So with that, we've gotten, we talked to the Sheriff's Department, we have their support for the, for a program, especially if we use the same program that they have going through the county. We have KB Homes support. We have legacy homes, I believe. And I believe the BIA was...
BIA has...
The BIA has support for it as well in terms of implementing the technology. For the development community, especially home builders, a lot of them will see a reduction in the fee from the imaging fee to the new technology fee. We're proposing 4.8%. And the reason it can go down is because we'll be applying that fee to basically every entitlement or plan that goes through the city on a computer system and pays an application fee will get 4.8%. What does that mean on a common typical, like a conditional use permit going into an existing building? That application's $350. That would be about $17. $16.80 would be the increase. They will save that on the cost of printing plans alone. So it does seem to have support in the development community, and we ask your support in approving it.
Questions?
Thanks a lot, Chris. We, I think, are at the point now where we're starting to implement best practices and some of the technology that other cities have, and so this is a welcome development.
Madam Mayor, do you need to open the public hearing unless there's other comments from council members?
At this time, I open the public hearing, and I will take testimony from the public. I do not have any cards. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak? I don't see anyone. Council members, comments? Questions?
It's a good move.
Formally close the public hearing, just for the record.
I close the public hearing at this time. And I call for action on the resolution number 15-036.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we have item, item B3, unpaid water fees. I open the public hearing at this time. I believe I do have some cards. The first one is Carl Tate.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilman. I'm here representing Prime A Investments. Our main hospital, as you're probably aware, is Desert Valley Hospital, and there was going to be a hearing this evening on some liens to be filed against some of the properties owned by Prime A. And I'm here to request a continuance for 30 days on that hearing because I had a very productive meeting today with Mr. Duran and Mr. Matthews of your staff, and they're going to revisit some of the properties and make sure that they're even being billed properly because some of the bills were coming in for land that has no water, and they were being billed for water. water, and they were being billed for water. And they realized that they're going to go out in the next couple of weeks, do a complete inventory of all of the properties. And they said they'd be ready in 30 days for another hearing. That would be my request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second card I have is Jeffrey Meadows.
Well, this is my first time here, council members. I received one of the letters. Jeffrey Meadows, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm an owner of one of the properties that had a lien taken out without my knowledge about a year ago. I just found out. I received a letter about a month ago from the city about an unpaid water bill, utility bills, and about this resolution and another one following, that basically, it sounds like to me that it would go to the county for collection as part of the property taxes. Which, you know, I don't have a real problem with people that don't pay their bills, you know. But in my particular case, this stemmed from a tenant that didn't pay their bill back in 2012. And I didn't, I knew nothing about it. It was in his name. So what I'm asking is that, you know, that the resolution take in consideration of people like myself, that I pay my bills, and I think other people should pay their bills as well. Now, and back in 2012, he was able, my tenant was able to get his own account with the city for his own water and utilities, trash, and whatnot. And, well, he actually had it since about 2010 when he moved in. I actually had to get him evicted. I had to get an attorney. He stopped paying me as well. And I lost probably $5,000 or $6,000 in rent. I spent about $2,000 on an attorney and about $2,500 fixing this house back up, you know. So I'm out money, too. But I don't have anybody to turn to because, you know, they're on welfare at this point because the fella hurt his back. I'm just asking for some consideration in these particular cases where, you know, that the bill cannot be passed to retroactively to an owner like this, plus all the fees and the costs. I think this started out like the tenant owed $290 for several months' rent. And by the time it got to me three, four weeks ago, it has blossomed to about $350, you know. My goodness, I'm retired. This is one, I'm just trying to keep these rentals afloat until the market goes back up a little bit so I can cash in and relax a little bit. But, you know, again, I'm just asking that this type of resolution focus on the people who don't want to pay their bills and not allow an entity to pass it on to somebody else that's innocent. It just seems fair and reasonable to me. Yeah, I guess my three minutes is up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, and I don't have anyone that wants to speak. Therefore, I'm closing the public hearing.
I have a couple of questions, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I can recall the staff's recommendation in regard to tenants who would not pay and changing the ordinance so that the property owners would be responsible for the bill. When did that occur?
I was racking my brain as the gentleman was speaking, trying to figure that out. And I don't recall exactly when it occurred. It's around the timeframe of 2012, I believe. Whether or not it would have applied in that case, I'm not sure. With regard to, it sounds like you may have more questions, but there's one issue that I wanted to point out, both for that case, which staff can meet with this gentleman, you know, during the week to research that, to find out if the lien is appropriate or not, given when that ordinance was modified. But also, Mr. Tate spoke, and I think he was very correct in talking about the progress that was made with one correction, and that is that staff would recommend that you approve the item, sending the liens forward. But that process takes well over 30 days to complete. Staff is willing to work with Mr. Tate, as we've indicated, to do the research and correct this prior to it actually being placed, any liens actually being placed. But in order to keep the lien process moving forward in a timely way to get it on to the property tax bills, staff would recommend that you adopt it tonight.
I, you've answered question two and three. Question four, I have properties. I've had to lien the property, but I can lift the lien anytime I want to as the property owner. And so I'm assuming that if through the hearing process, other individuals come forward, and after meeting with the staff, they have a legitimate case, or the lien should have occurred, the city can remove that lien at any time.
Absolutely, and it does not have to come back to the council to do that.
That's my understanding. On that basis, why, there's no reason to continue.
Ordinance that would prevent any citizen from coming to staff to resolve any dispute over a water bill. Have I repeated Mr. Cox's question?
You've restated it perhaps in a different way, but you've added "any citizen," and that's correct. Anyone, as we learned with some of the hotel liens that we had to do, just because the council takes an action to file the lien, and even if a lien is filed, anytime somebody comes forward and gets that resolved, whether it's through payment or some other means, if there's an error found, the city can lift that lien very quickly. But the process of placing the lien is what takes some time, and why would you have to do it?
Mr. Tate and Mr. Miller have legitimate concerns, and they'd like to get them resolved. They should do that. That has nothing to do, really, with what's before us.
That's correct. I firmly believe that they will have their issues resolved one way or another, positively or favorably, with staff before the lien is filed.
I move approval. Are we ready?
Yes, we can make a motion, action on resolution number BWD 15-007.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy.
Second.
Second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti abstaining.
Now we move on to item B4, unpaid rubbish collection, sewer use fees, storm drain fees, hazardous waste fees, and/or assembly bill, 939 recycling fees. And I open the public hearing. I will take testimony, and I do not have any cards at this time. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? You can step up.
Well, I might say this is kind of a continuation. Like I said, after I received this one and only letter that, from the city, and I went to the water group there, the utility group, and asked them why I hadn't received anything before that time. Because when I evicted that tenant, and that was about like in April, May of 2012, and I came to start the utilities over again and get water and everything so I could proceed with the cleaning, at that time, they told me to, that I had to take it out on my own name, which is what I wanted to do at, you know, until I got it cleaned and rented again. But then I would have to continue on in my name. And it's been that way ever since. I just passed the bill on to the tenant. But, so, just to give you some history of, from 2012 on, about mid-year, the tenants could no longer take it out in their name. It was part of the owner only. So while I was at the office there, they mentioned that, that I should have received a letter a year ago. It went directly to my management company, and I said, and I asked them, I called them out on the spot, and they didn't receive any a year ago. They went through the records. They said, "Mr. Meadows, I always email you everything that comes your way that's in your name." So I asked her for a copy at the city, and she gave me one, but it didn't, it wasn't on the letterhead like the first letter that I received in the mail. It's just a generic computer print, so I don't know if it ever went out or not. But she told me, based on that first letter, the House has a lien on it already. Now, this new, the other resolution means that it will now go to the county. The resolution we're talking about now goes to the county for collection. So here I am again, you know. I just found out about the lien, and just found out that it cost me an extra $50 for the lien, and I wouldn't even given a chance to take care of the first bill. I mean, when I, when I started it up again at the same house, there was nothing said of it. And here we are three years later. I'm just asking that City Council give some consideration in mine, and maybe some other owners' cases that are similar. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there word coming up?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I wasn't planning on speaking on this, and I tried to get in on the public hearing on the B3. But however, since our rubbish, storm drain, sewer, and all that hazardous waste is combined with our water, I'd like to speak on that briefly. As I've said to you before, I've been a 18, 17, 18-year homeowner, and there was a time, and I think people have forgotten, and it wasn't that long ago, that I don't, I'm not aware if there was different water districts at the time. I was in Baldi Mesa Water District, which I knew the city bought out, which I was not in favor of. But at that time, when you owned your home, it doesn't matter if you're renting, you're living there, you're not living there, you're responsible for that water bill. And I remember when I moved here, I was kind of surprised. I mean, I had to actually go to the office at Baldi Mesa Water District on Duncan Road and show them proof of my property ownership and of my legal name. So I feel for the people that are in situations otherwise right now. But I do think we, whether we rent or we don't rent, and I don't rent for similar reasons to that gentleman that was just speaking, we have a responsibility to stay on top of said tenants, make sure the bills are paid, stay in contact with who's ever collecting the rent, or the property management. So yes, these things do go to lien when they're not diligently looked over. And I do want to say one more thing. What sparked my desire to come up here on this issue was I heard somebody say something about getting a water bill for a property that wasn't even developed here in Victorville. And I'm going to approach this as delicately as I can. When I was employed with the City of Victorville, there was an issue within the water. And I remember clearly what it was, and this was a long time ago. And the city, meaning the department heads or whatever, couldn't figure out how to properly bill the commercial properties. And the specific case at hand was, how much do we bill Spaghetti Eddie's versus Hometown Buffet? There was actually, if you can believe it, debate about, do we bill it based on actual water usage? I'm not kidding you, how many sinks and toilets they have, or some other criteria. And so I'm a little stunned to hear tonight that these issues may still be existing. And on that issue I mentioned, Spaghetti Eddie's versus Hometown Buffet, Spaghetti Eddie's, at the time, I don't think it's that now, was getting billed more than Hometown Buffet. Now, we all know Hometown Buffet uses more water and has more toilets and sinks. So I just think that's indicative of something maybe not being properly addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else that wants to speak. Therefore, I will be closing the public hearing. And council members, do we have any comments?
Again, I think that if there is an issue that we can trace back and meet with staff, I'm sure staff has the records in regard to what happened in 212. If tenants could sign up, I do know, I got stuck with the bill. I didn't argue with them. I paid it, but I felt it was unfair because the tenant had signed up, and I felt it was the tenant's bill. When we changed, I think that when the city changed, they tried to make it clear that from that point forward, property owners would be held responsible. And at that time, they held a large number of property owners responsible. But they also tried to find the tenants, and many tenants had just left. They had gone. I have never seen an instance where staff wasn't willing to sit down, look at it objectively, show the individuals if they have a question when the ordinance went into effect, and work out a reasonable compromise if a compromise was necessary. I think this would occur on this also. And on that basis, I move for approval.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we go on to item B5, determinations to fix, levy, and collect water standby charges, water improvement, District Number One. And I open the public hearing at this time. I do not have any cards. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? I don't see anyone. Therefore, I close the public hearing. Do we have any council members' comments? Questions?
Is this the same fee? Is this an increase in fee, staff?
No, this is the same fee as last year.
Same rate?
Yes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B6, determinations to fix, levy, and collect water standby charges, water improvement, District Number Two. I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards. I do not see anyone that wants to speak on this item. Therefore, I close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B7, confirmation of annual assessments for landscape maintenance assessment districts, drainage facility assessment, District Four through Eight. And I continue to take testimony. This is, this is a continuation from the May 5, 2015 meeting.
Question of the attorney, if council members own property or have their homes in a landscape maintenance district, have to vote on this, is that considered a conflict?
Given the number of LMAs concerned here, I think the public generally exception would apply to you.
What?
The public generally exception, it applies to so many people here, significant segment of the population.
Thank you.
Then we have action. Let's see, Mayor. Okay. Do we have an action on this one here now? Resolution number 15-? It was a continuation.
Oh, it's good. I'm sorry.
Has the public hearing been closed, Mayor Garcia?
I close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Mayor, this one, if I'm right, this one does not involve any increases?
That is correct. These are the same fees as last year. So with all of these, just like the standby fees, if they're not confirmed each year, then they go away, and they're basically impossible to get back.
I'll move for approval of resolutions 15-010 through 15-014 as a part of Agenda Item B7.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now it's item B8, correct?
B8, yes.
Confirmation of annual assessments for all drainage facilities assessment districts.
Mayor, this one again involves no increases, am I right? Mayor, this one again involves no increases, am I right?
That is correct.
Move for approval.
We need to open the public hearing.
Hearing.
Okay. I open the public hearing at this time. And I do not have any cards. Or is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? I don't see anyone. Council members, do you have any comments? I should close the, I close the public hearing at this time. It's not stating it here on my paperwork, so I'm sorry. I close the public hearing. So do we have any council members' comments?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern, and this would be to adopt Resolutions 15-015 through 15-017. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B9, confirmation of annual assessments for maintenance assessment districts. I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? I don't see anyone. I close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, like the last couple of items, this is no increase in costs at all, or increase in fees, it's simply a confirmation.
Move for approval of Resolution 15-018 and 15-019.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B10, increased assessment amount for citywide landscape maintenance, District Number One. And I open the public hearing. I don't have any cards. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? I don't see anyone. Council members, do you have any comments?
If the hearing is closed, this is an, this is an increase, isn't it?
This is an increase, but you're not actually voting on the increase. This would be to start the collection, or excuse me, the election process, and actually direct staff to count those votes.
The counting of the ballots that we have received will start at 8:00 tomorrow morning, and then the results will be reported at the next council meeting.
Okay.
Did we have any, anyone drop anything off tonight?
And this is a, this is an increase from 26 to $72. Are we that underfunded on this district?
We are. In fact, for each of these districts, when they were put in place, they had no inflator for cost of living increases, and therefore, it actually went several years where it overcollected, and that switched at some point, and now we've been undercollecting for some time, and we've hit the point that we need to ask the residents within those districts if they, they're essentially given two options, either to approve an increase to maintain the current level of service, or if they say no, then the level of service will be reduced to whatever the current funding will allow.
I'm just curious, why would we approve this before we know the results, the results of the election?
Staff is not recommending that you actually take an action on the resolution. It's there, I think, for information purposes. The public hearing was opened, closed. Now, staff will be directed to count the votes, and then this item will be back on the next agenda.
So we will not be taking an action on these resolutions tonight, but only after we find out the results?
Exactly. We have to find out the results of the vote first.
Thank you.
Is that the case for the two subsequent actions?
That would be the same with the subsequent actions as well.
Same as B11 and 12?
That is true, but we should go through each one and open the public hearing on each one.
Okay, very good. Okay, so there's no action on this item, B11. So we move on to B12?
The public hearing would need to be opened, Mayor Garcia, on B11, and B12 as separate, separate items.
We're on B11 right now.
I open the public hearing on item B11. And I don't have any cards or anyone that wants to speak on this item, so I close the public hearing.
Again, staff is looking for direction to go ahead and, and count the votes on the ballots, and then this item will be put on the next agenda.
Okay.
Don't need a vote from us on that.
No.
This direction, and this will be, this will continue then to our next meeting, or?
That's correct, and the results will be reported at that time.
Results will be continued to our next meeting, which will be June the 15th?
The public hearing is closed, but the, the results of the election, after counting the ballots, that will be reported at the July 21st meeting, assuming that's going to be the next meeting of the council.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we move on to item B12, increased assessment amount for Brentwood Landscape Maintenance District Number Three. And I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? I don't see anyone, so I close the public hearing. And do we have any comments from Do we make a motion on this one here then?
We don't need one, we just, again, staff has been directed to count the ballots, and we'll report the outcome.
Oh, this is the same as?
And so we will hear this matter again on July 21?
That's correct.
On July 21, okay. B13, is that going to be the same as the B12?
B13 is different.
Okay. So we move on to item B13, continuance request, amending and revising portions of Chapter 13 dash 60 of the Victorville Municipal Code relating to water conservation.
Mayor Garcia, this is, again, the city ordinance to ensure conformity with the new requirements coming down from the state Water Resources Control Board. You previously opened the public hearing. We're not ready at this time to take action on this item, because again, there's new mandates coming down from the state, and we want to ensure that this ordinance is in compliance. Therefore, staff's requesting that you open the, open the continued public hearing, and once again, continue it to the next meeting, which I believe is going to be July 21st.
Okay. So this one will be continued to July 21st?
Yes, but open, again, open the public hearing and take any testimony.
Okay, I open the public hearing at this time. And I do not have any cards. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? I don't see anyone, so I close the public hearing.
No, we're not closing it, just continuing it to July.
Or without closing, it is continuing to July 21st, correct?
Thank you.
So we move on to B14?
Yes, B14 is the next one.
Proposed revised gas service rate schedules. And I open the public hearing. And I do not have any cards. Is there anyone that wants to come up and speak on this item? I don't see anyone, so I close the public hearing. Any comments from council members?
Move for approval of Resolution 15-045.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to consent calendar. This can be approved from Item C1 through C6 with one motion, unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion or otherwise.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And now, we move on to written communications. And I do have cards on this one here. D1, four-way stop controls at Eagle Ranch Parkway and Mesa Linda Avenue. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
The recommendation would be to adopt Resolution Number 15-048, which establishes a four-way stop at Eagle Ranch Parkway and Mesa Linda Avenue.
And I have one card for D1, and that's Maggie Low.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and Council. You know, I'm in that neighborhood a lot, that's my neighborhood, and unless there's something I'm not clear about, there's already a traffic signal light, eastbound, westbound Bear Valley at Mesa Linda Parkway, I'm sorry, Eagle Ranch Parkway and Mesa Linda, and then Mesa Linda and Eagle Ranch Parkway have stop signs. So I'm apparently not clear on something. In other words, I don't, I don't understand what this written communication item is, is about. There's already traffic control there. And I will say this, that's not far from the intersection that I've had ongoing for years, complaints about Eucalyptus and Mesa Linda. It's just down the street a mile, let's say. And I would suggest to the council, I don't know what this is about, but I would suggest to the council that the same people who do not abide the law, abide by the law, at Mesa Linda and Eucalyptus will be the same people who aren't going to abide the law of any additional control at that intersection. Thank you.
My understanding, this is from a two-way stop to a four-way stop? Or is it from no stop to a four-way stop?
Currently, the Mesa Linda Avenue has stop signs when you get to Eagle Ranch Parkway. Eagle Ranch Parkway does not have stop signs.
So it's going from a two-way stop to a four-way?
So it goes from a two-way stop to a four-way stop, that is correct.
Yeah, I thought. It's needed.
You have a motion?
I've moved for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, award of contract for Eagle Ranch Slurry Seal Project. Madam Clerk, can you read the recommendation?
Yes, this would be to award a construction contract to American Asphalt South, Inc. in the amount of $629,388.50 for the Eagle Ranch Slurry Seal Project.
Madam Mayor, I had a question on this. I couldn't tell from the diagram, is the slurry only going to be on the border streets, or is it going to be everything inside the border?
The city engineer, Brian Gingler, is on his way down.
And I, my question also is, I'm hoping it includes La Mesa, that a separate project.
La Mesa Road actually is on our three-year cycle for complete reconstruction.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
That's right. It's the interior streets, it's really not the border streets surrounding the Eagle Ranch area. La Mesa will be a separate project that'll follow.
We're not going to do all the streets inside that.
It will include all the streets interior in the Eagle Ranch area.
Everything.
Crack sealing and slurry sealing.
The border on the map is shown in black, perhaps that's why it looks like that's where the slurry seal is going. It's actually all of these streets within the interior of the box that's drawn on the map.
And also the border streets, or not the border streets?
This project will not include the border streets.
Okay.
It's everything interior.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion? Any other questions?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Compliments to staff, it's good to see this type of stuff going on again. Just like, we're all happy about that up here.
Very happy, everything's, a lot of good things happening. Okay, item D3, request for sewer variance at 15345 Lindero Street. Madam Clerk, can you read the recommendation?
Yes, this would be for the City Council to either grant or deny the request for a variance from the requirement to connect to the public sewer system at 15345 Lindero Street.
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Under discussion, it says the property at 15345 Lindero Street recently had an inspection of the home septic system. Who inspected it?
Typically, these are driven by a sale of the property.
Well, the reason I ask is I, involved in the recent sale, and the individual said it had failed, and after we paid the individuals, that said, no, it wasn't, it was not a failure. And at least we ought to have a policy that the person inspects it doesn't also get to replace it. That cost me $4,500, and I have some real serious questions about who does the inspections.
I don't know who did this particular inspection. I do know the property was up for sale, and that's why the issue came up. I talked to the property owner a couple weeks ago, and they've been trying to get this property sold for a little while, and now it's apparently an escrow.
And we can, as a separate issue, we can take a look to see if there's some ordinance that we could tweak to ensure that someone who's inspecting these isn't then making a second fee by replacing them, and perhaps impairing their judgment on the inspection.
And then until later, that something happened that caused me to get a separate bid, so the individual that was out there, he uncovered it, was working, and he said there was nothing wrong with this. But the individual who made the inspection wanted to replace it. And that in itself ought not be allowed. And so if we are involved in sewers and we're protecting groundwater, why isn't the city doing the inspections?
We can certainly take a look at that, Mayor Protim. It's not something the city has been involved in, it's been a private transaction until you brought the issue up.
Well, if it happened to me, I'm betting it's happened to other people. So we need to look at it. Just, we're here to provide service and protect the citizens, and I think it's, we owe it to the public to have the confidence when somebody says that a septic system has failed, that it actually has failed.
Do we have an inspection crew or a skill set at the city to determine if septic tanks fail?
Not that I'm aware of. I do know that the permits are issued by the building, because it's on private property, the permit for septic or any onsite work would be through the building department.
I'm a little concerned about us venturing into the territory of protecting citizens from contractors.
Unless don't issue the permit. We're collecting the fee, we're issuing the permit, we have an obligation here.
Staff can definitely research these items and bring it back for a healthy discussion on sort of the overall, you know, whether or not the city should or should not be involved in the inspection process, and if so, to what degree. I think it'd also be appropriate to
That's it, I think.
...this item for this one homeowner.
Unlike the one we dealt with at the last meeting, where the difference was a few thousand dollars, and we denied it. This is more like the ones that we have typically approved with this kind of a price difference.
That is correct. That's why staff several years ago stopped making a recommendation on these, simply because we really can't recommend something outside of what the municipal code says. However, as I think you've noticed, the difference in fees, the difference in cost is about tenfold over just simply replacing the septic, the septic pit.
And in order to grant the variance, you need to, per the, per the staff report, you make essentially a determination that it doesn't materially affect the public health, safety, and welfare. So that's inherent in a motion if you decide to grant the variance.
I'll make that motion.
What is the motion?
Motion would be to grant the variance and make the findings set forth in the staff report with respect to the, this will not materially affect the health, safety, and welfare.
I didn't want him to try and repeat it, so.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And just for the council's information, staff is looking at this ordinance, because this seems to be a recurring thing, to see, is there something else we can do, is there something we can do differently that makes this process a little easier for, for these homeowners?
The problem seems to be the, the connection to the, I mean, the distance from the property line to where the nearest sewer line is.
Correct.
And we've got individual homeowners who don't want to pay that $40,000, $50,000 to bring that line to their property.
Correct.
Once, once it's there, the difference is pretty minimal. Is that a cost that the city ought to consider?
In other neighborhoods, the city has assisted homeowners, residents who have come forward requesting their entire neighborhood actually be connected to the sewer, and ultimately, we've assisted them with setting up And ultimately, we've assisted them with setting up an assessment district that would pay for all that, and then it's attached to their property tax bills. We could, we have not initiated that ourselves as a city. We've only done that upon the request. And typically, it takes really one homeowner who wants to kind of lead the charge, knock on all those doors, and convince his or her neighbors to get on board. So I think the question that we have to look at is perhaps, I think we have a 200 or 150-foot requirement. If you're within that amount, then the ordinance would require you to connect a sewer. Perhaps we need to maybe shorten that distance so that we get less of these issues.
On these variances that have come before the council, there's always this very, almost always, a very large difference between replacing and doing the extensioning. Are, do we just happen to be getting an occasional house within an entire neighborhood that's not sewered? Or is it one house that's not sewored in a neighborhood that is sewored?
No, it's typically an occasional house in a neighborhood that's not sewored.
Whole neighborhood is not sewored.
But happens to be, or some corner of their property happens to be within that minimum distance. Typically, if a neighborhood is sewored, then they're close enough that the cost is relatively, relatively low.
Will you come back with some kind of a way of addressing Mr. Cox's concern?
Yes, we will. We'll put some item on some future agenda once we've had a chance to look at all of the issues that we can identify.
Okay, do we have a motion here?
There has been an action taken on this, oh, I'm sorry.
There has, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
There was action taken, I'm sorry.
There was an action taken on this item.
I continued the discussion after the item was closed. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Didn't take much to confuse me. Thank you. Okay, item D5?
Before.
D4.
Oh, we are on D4. Okay, then I was not confused. Or I am now. Okay, D4, summary vacation abandonment of dedicated vehicular rights of ingress and egress. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
Yes, this would be for the council to adopt resolution number 15-049, to adopt required findings and approve the vacation abandonment of the vehicular access rights dedicated to the County of San Bernardino, City of Victorville, for vehicular access rights along Village Drive.
Okay. Any questions?
Are all the property owners involved in agreement?
This only affects three lots, as far as I understand it, and I believe all three lot owners are the same owner.
No, they're not, actually. There is a, one of the owners is here tonight. I can see it in the audience. The other owner, I don't know that we've heard anything from, yes or no. He's built a fence across this area as it is anyway, so it would appear that he doesn't have any intention of using the driveway that he would be, that would be vacated. Brian, have you, have we heard anything from the other property owner?
By knowledge, we haven't heard from the other property owner, but they have adequate access. There's an alley adjacent to their parcel, and they don't have any access issues with their parcel. I don't know why they would have an objection to this action being taken.
On the basis of the staff report, I saw move for approval of resolution number 15049. Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, as the next item on the agenda is property located exactly next door to my business, I'm going to abstain on this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item D5, sale of real property located at 17185 Yuma Street, Morris A. Kelly. And Madam Clerk, will you read the recommendation?
Yes, this would be that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the sale of the former Victorville Water District Headquarters facility, and that the mayor authorize the assistant city manager to execute all related transactional documents.
I do have some cards. The first one that I have is Thomas Jacob Jacobson. Will you please come up?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, and also to all the people that are watching on TV, the city of Victorville. I represent, my name's Thomas Jacobson, and I represent the High Desert Association of Realtors. And the reason that I'm here today is because you're being asked to accept a bid to buy property for $1.6 million. But my client bid $1.8 million for the property. My client didn't have any contingencies at all in the offer, other than the normal contingencies that are found in the printed form, for which some of them might be such simple things as the property being in good shape and condition. The issue of good shape and condition is covered because the MLS listing covering this property says everything works and everything's fine. So that's not really a contingency. There are pre-printed contingencies in the documents that both parties submitted, both using the same forms. My client had shorter contingency periods than the one at 1.6. And by way of example, my client had no financing condition, no financing condition. Yet, Mr. Kelly is proposing 90 days in which to be able to go out and try and obtain a loan. He's also asked for time to inspect the property and make sure it fits into his economic schedule and his economic way of doing things. We don't have any contingency. We have a 30-day closing period. And that 30-day closing period, we're going to be all cash. We're not, depending on anybody else to provide us with the money, we're basically ready to go. But for the title things that one must always look at, which both parties have asked to do, and the, some of the other very basic things of which my client has shortened contingency periods, we're ready to close on this property. Now, there's other issues that have been raised by this, in addition to the fact that there's clearly a price difference, and the net price is $1.8 million to the water department in the city. It's not anything less. There's never been any, any itemization of what brings this $1.8 million below $1.6. It's a matter of some simple math. There's another issue. It's very important to the citizens of this city. One of your council members said, I have a piece of property next door, I'm going to recuse myself.
You have 30 seconds.
But what has happened here is you've allowed a real estate broker to represent both sides of the transaction and to participate in the evaluation of the offers. And that's a conflict of interest. We may have statutes which allow dual agency in this state, but I think you need to examine and ask yourself the question whether or not the citizens of Victorville have been properly represented here by allowing an agent to bring their offer in, and strangely enough, even though it is lower than the other offer
Your time's up.
... that is the proposed offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Rebecca Upwell.
We were made aware last week that we did not get the offer. Today, we saw that this was on the agenda. Somebody told me once, if we feel like we have not been treated fairly, and that's the only thing I ever asked from any of you, was for us to have the same opportunity. And I was told, come to the council, and that's what we're doing. So I thank you for anything you can help. But we are $200,000 more, and we would like you to look at that and maybe give us another chance.
Thank you. Now we have Joseph Bradley.
Good evening, Mayor Joseph Brady. I'm the president of Bradco Companies. I'm humbled and I'm very proud to be a board member of the High Desert Association of Realtors, and I was also the agent that was selected by the board to tender the offer. I would like to ask the council to think very strongly about what our legal counsel said. Tom's a very well-known attorney, he's not here in an adversarial manner. There is a potential conflict. The offer is real clear, it's a million eight. We saw the other offer, it was online today, at a million six. The problem is that if you, and I would really, from a real estate standpoint, I had to sit across the way here 20 years ago and settle a mediation for $1,000 over some wording in a flyer that got me in trouble when I said newer units. So I would strongly suggest that before the council takes a vote on this, that you go back and take a look at what the remarks were in the multiple listing service. This is out in public. So one, I think that we have that. Two, I'm very proud to be a part of probably the second largest trade organization in the high desert region. We employ 1,000 Realtor members, and Realtors have to deal with a very high level of code of ethics through the National Association, the California Association. We do a couple hundred million dollars a year in sales, we employ a lot of people. But at the end of the day, I found something rather odd. We had originally approached the city with an unsolicited offer probably a year and a half ago, we met with Mr. Robertson. And all of a sudden, we came back to offer, and then all of a sudden, there was all this activity, and all of a sudden, I couldn't get any responses on who this double offer was. I was out of town, I have an email on my phone. I'd be glad to read or supply to legal counsel. And we couldn't find out that the agent was acting, stands to make $96,000. And are they really acting in the best interest of the city? Or are they acting in the best interest of them? I think the High Desert Association of Realtors have done what they can to do what's best for the citizens of the high desert region by promoting homeownership, by promoting subcontractors and buildings. And the only thing I would ask the council is to maybe go back and take a look at this. This is a group of people that want to be a part of your committee, they're currently in Asperia, they love their location, but they want to be a part of your community. And I think they want to be heard, and I really do believe they have a right to be heard. And I just hope that the council will really take in their heart to say, okay, we have two competing offers here, and this is all cash. It's the 30-day deal versus 120-day deal. I was not aware until this afternoon that this was 120-day deal with a 90-day contingency.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
We have no contingencies. So again, I know each and every one, I know legal counsel, I'm proud to work with your city, I'm proud to work with your staff, this is not personal, but I would ask you to really take a hard look at this. This is not just about an offer, but it's about putting a great organization, a great building, to become a great part of the great city of Victorville and the great heritage that you have. So I thank you for your comments. I would ask you, though, Andre, really take a look at this. This is a red herring, and I did not see this until tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, what we all know sitting here is that these offers are not two equal offers that are only $200,000 apart. That's just not true. One is an as-is offer, the lower one, and the higher one is to make sure that all components are working in proper condition. That building has been vacant since 2008. Or sometime perhaps early 2009. It's been vacant for six years. We know some of the problems we've had with that empty piece of property. What we have to consider is whether we're willing to take the risk of incurring the cost of the corrective action and improvements that we would have to make into the systems that are not working, and take that risk against a $1.6 million offer, not cash, with financing, but as-is. The difference of 30 and 90 days is not particularly important to the citizens of Victorville. The risk involved for this city with the board of Realtors' offer just didn't warrant accepting that price. Those are the facts, and I think we all know those facts.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for city attorney. Some of the issues raised tonight, are those issues that we need to reconsider?
I think you've been aware pretty much of all of those issues. I'm not aware of anything that's that new right now. Certainly, the conflict issue with respect to the brokers has been raised and considered. Again, as Councilman McKennedy mentioned, I think you have all the facts. This item has been discussed, as has been noticed in the closed session items, as part of the real estate negotiations. So I don't see anything out there. This is a sale pursuant to the water code, and you are able to sell it if that's your decision, it's really a policy decision.
Well, I, thank you. I'm very familiar, obviously, with this negotiation. What I was after was more of an apples-to-apples comparison. And I think when you talk about contingencies and you talk about the condition of the property, certainly we know the condition of the property is an issue. That was an issue for me. But I think what we're talking about is both prospective buyers would have had a chance to get comfortable with the condition of the building, and after that, accept the risk of whatever the repairs were, there's going to be disagreements on what the value of those repairs are going to be. So I was looking for something like that, whereas both potential buyers recognize that there is issues, but they're willing to take that risk. They have, they had plenty of time to look at it and come in with their best offer. And I just, I don't think I got that, but that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Madam Mayor, I realize that our discussions are not, well, our briefings were in executive session because we had staff people handling this. And I also agree with Mr. Kennedy that the contingency was an unknown, we didn't want to gamble with that because it was an offer. But I didn't hear that tonight. I heard tonight that one offer was $1.8 million at 30 days, and one is $1.6 with a bunch of contingencies. I'd like that really clarified. There are some problems with the building, and I don't know that the supposed problems are real or not, or whether or not we take a $200,000 gamble. But my understanding was that, unless I misunderstood the staff, we were going to go back, you submit the highest and best offer, you take it, there are no contingencies, and we weren't going to repair anything. They could inspect the building and do whatever they wanted to do. So if it's true that one property owner is offering $1.8 million and will take it as-is, we have a clear sale. If one is $1.8 million, but the city is responsible for whatever can occur out there, but the other one is $1.6 million, they'll take it as-is, then obviously, we have a different sale. At this point in time, I'm not sure, I have a clear understanding of exactly what occurred, and I don't think I want to be in a position of negotiating that as we sit here. Our city manager certainly understood the council's directive, the city attorney certainly is in a position to understand, because he was taking notes, I wasn't. It seems that if there's any question on any council members at all, there might not be, there is on my part, I, my preference would be to refer this to the manager and the attorney to clarify these issues. Because we, as the city, as the responsibility to property owners, taxpayers, have the responsibility to get the maximum that we can get from the building without taking chances. I do know that there is a misunderstanding here, that it's not completely clear. I don't know if you can purchase a warranty, I don't know. I, what was expressed here is not my exact understanding. So I think it needs to be clarified. I hope it can be clarified.
Madam Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, if I might, just to perhaps try to answer some of the questions, and a lot of what you've asked has been discussed extensively in closed session, and we really did our best to take the two offers and compare them side by side. And at first glance, and the representation of the difference in the gross sales price is correct, there is a difference between the two gross sales prices of 1.8 versus 1.6. And is a large part of the deliberation of the Water District Board was what was going to be the best net price with the least amount of risk to the board. And those were the most fundamental questions, and that was what helped answer the question as to which offer to choose. Very fundamentally said, as it relates to the offer involving the High Desert Association of Realtors, the usage of the term contingency might be not appropriate in this case, because really, the issue is not so much over contingencies, it's more the conditions of the property upon transfer of title. And the issue, when we compared both offers together, the conditions that one offer, the High Desert Association's Realtors' offer, was substant- High Desert Association's Realtors' offer, was substantially, it was requiring substantially greater improvements from us to satisfy their willingness to actually accept the transfer of property to them, which was going to, in our mind, when we did some estimating, require substantial costs. And despite their suggestion about their ability to close quicker, because the fact is, we know it's going to take quite a bit of time to actually perform those improvements, likely to a level of their satisfaction, we saw that also as not only much more risky in terms of cost, but also more timely. So, from our perspective, we actually tried to consider this more so on a net basis, comparing on both sides, side by side. We do believe all parties are knowledgeable of the conditions of the property, because each of the parties have actually walked through it and even conducted inspections to certain extents. So, we feel like they're knowledgeable enough about the facility, and at the end of the day, really, what we are looking at is what is the net best deal at the quickest closing for the Water District.
Thank you. That was my understanding also, that both parties were aware of the conditions of the building, and that it was not really determined, you know, how much it would cost to bring it up to standards and codes and everything that's required. And that the 1.6 was as-is, and the other one had all the conditions and requirements. So, I mean, that was my understanding from closed session.
And that's how it was, that's how the offers were presented.
And that both parties were quite aware of the condition of the building.
May I speak?
You haven't, yes, you can allow.
Okay, go ahead. My understanding, anytime you go get a loan, it's not an as-is. They're going to have to approve the building, probably get another appraisal. What I would have done, that's my other hat. As a Realtor hat, I would have said, you guys are going to pay $25,050, max, no more, and that's it. That would have got you the $150,000 more on ours, if, you know, if you would have countered back to us that we will not pay more than a certain amount. That would have got you a lot more, and since this hasn't been accepted, you could still do it.
Madam Mayor, just to remind the council, I don't know if it's appropriate or not for me to discuss the closed session discussion, but one of the issues that came up was we had already asked for two best and final offers. There was one, and then because there was a delay because of a quorum issue, we actually asked for a second best and final offer. So, at least my remembrance is that the council was not interested in doing a third best and final offer on this, on this property.
Thank you. I, go ahead.
Mayor, I just, I want to read something that, when the second offer was prepared, I was out of town. I authorized our office to prepare, and it was delivered to the city. It was delivered to the exclusive agents. But, this is what the MLS says. So, this is something that's in public view that I think really creates what the issue is. The heating vent, it says a bunch of data. It says, "A heating, ventilation, air conditioning system and other mechanical, electrical systems are of high quality." The building is in good condition. So, you have that. If the city was not aware that there were any problems, and I think we all know, a building sits for a period of time, there's going to be some problems. If the city was not aware that there were any problems, how could the city so quickly calculate, in a closed session, what would have cost to have repaired? So, I think that that's really kind of, I mean, you've got two issues. You've got what was disclosed to the public, to any ready, willing, and able buyer. But, two, how would the city have known what that cost was if the city was telling people that there was nothing wrong with the building? If the city knew there was something wrong, they would have said, okay, we know there's a roof problem, there's an air conditioning problem, we know that's going to be $200,000, then all buyers out there would really be on equal footing. I think there's a, I don't think, I, the board does not believe that the city intentionally withheld information, but the city may, if they did this again with another building, may have those inspections done on up front, because this says right here, and this comes from the agent that represents the city, and in this case, represents both sides, that the building was in good shape and the systems were of high quality. So, that would lead a normal, ready, willing, and able buyer to believe that those systems were willing to go. I think that Mrs. Otwell's comment about the city had come on back and said, okay, would you take the building at this point? We did have it inspected, and we did believe that there were some issues on out there. But, then when you take a look at this, I think that this really kind of creates the question. And in kind, I would hope that maybe the council would go back and revisit this, maybe sit down and talk to both the parties and see who can perform. I can tell you that I know the financial standing as a board member of the Board of Realtors. The cash is in the bank. There's no contingency about it. We're not going out looking for a loan. And as Mrs. Otwell said, if you go out and take a look for a loan, there's not a lot of loans done in the High Desert today, that they're going to have their own contingencies too. And we want to be sure the citizens, at the end of the day, of the city of Victorville will receive the highest net dollar possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one other card. Carrie Leon.
Carrie Leon, and I would like to donate my time to Tom Jacobson. Tom Jacobson.
I know that you folks did the very best you could when you evaluated these things. However, I think if you do read Mr. Kelly's offer, you'll see that his document is exactly the same document as ours, and when it comes to contingencies, they're exactly the same. They have contingencies. And that's an error to say that Mr. Kelly is offering to purchase this without contingencies. They may have written "as-is" somewhere in there, but if you read paragraph nine of the offer and read it carefully, you will note that they do have an inspection contingency, and they do have all those contingencies, the same ones that we were asking for. Yes, we don't know. And you did advertise in the MLS that there was nothing, that the building was in good shape. Let me read you exactly what was in the MLS that the city published. It said, "The heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system and other mechanical and electrical systems are of high quality." And if that's the case, then we're not expecting that there's going to be very much for us to do or anybody else to do. But, Mr. Kelly has the right, based on what's in paragraph nine of his offer, to come back to you and say, oh, I found that this doesn't work, and that doesn't work, and we'd like to have this fixed. Therefore, when you're evaluating this, you must evaluate it on the basis really of price, because the same contingencies are there. They're in the agreement, and I'm sure your city attorney can look at that for you. The other thing is, you have to look at this conflict of interest, Mr. City Attorney. The law says you can act as a dual agent, but the law also says you have a fiduciary duty to your client, and that fiduciary duty is to get you the very best offer. And to the extent that this real estate company participated in giving any advice to the city with regard to what offer to accept, they had a conflict of interest, and that taints this entire process. And I think you need to take another look at it before you make a decision. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, too.
And Mayor, just, I don't want to get into a legal debate with a lawyer. I'm not that foolish, but he's using the term contingency. I think we understand the contingency issues. Problem is the conditions. If the Board of Realtors read that listing and did not inspect the building and relied completely what was in that listing, then why did they make an offer with all of these conditions connected to it? I don't understand why they would have insisted that all these things be fixed and repaired, and we did a pretty good job of estimating what the cost of those repairs is going to be, if they were relying on the words in the listing. I wish the listing agent had been more accurate, but is there a possibility that either buyer was misinformed and did not understand the condition of that building?
Before the listing was made, staff went out and tested the systems. The systems appeared to be working. You are correct that, I don't know if there was termed conditions or exactly what, but there was a very long list that was received with the offer that has a higher dollar amount from the Realtors. There was very specifically an "as-is" statement made by the other potential buyer. One of the thing that I want to mention is that the, along with the list of conditions that they would accept the building, was also a demand for a five-year warranty on the building as well. It's one thing for staff to go out and test the systems they appear to be operating, then to be asked to warranty those systems for five years, it becomes a different animal at that point in time. I think that's part of what you're seeing is what is listed as simple contingencies are different than the list of conditions as far as how they would accept the building. And, you know, I'm not a lawyer either, so I'm not going to try to argue with a lawyer, but certainly, he's trying to win his case here today by, in my opinion, skewing the actual facts. We have not put the entirety of both bids into this agenda item. I know the council has been privy to all of those lists. All of that will become a public document once a decision is made, and I think anybody reviewing that can see the difference in the offers pretty clearly.
I would just.
Thing that I'm a little troubled by is that I feel like we're hearing a request for a counter offer or some kind of an additional offer after everything's done. And I thought we made it clear, we wanted everybody's final and best offer, and I thought that's what we had.
That's what was made, was a best and final offer, and then because of the continuance of the previous closed session, due to a quorum issue, there was only two council members present at that point. It opened, it opened the door for even second final and best offer to be made.
Madam Mayor, I have a quick comment. What, now, I've been through a lot of negotiations over time in Southern California, a lot of different type of projects, but one of the things that struck me immediately on this particular sale was the language, and whether it's contingencies, whether it's gross, whether it's net, I was looking for an apples-to-apple and comparison of these two offers, knowing with communication to the potential buyers, with communication, I didn't think we were in too much of a hurry to do this, so that we could understand the common language that we're all using here, not that one is saying "as-is" and one is not. So, for me, I was uncomfortable. I was uncomfortable with the description of the property. I was uncomfortable with the appraisal. But, I heard earlier from Mayor Protem Cox's recommendation to have the staff, city manager, and the city attorney work through this to get that apples-to-apple comparison on these offers, in the best interest of being good stewards of taxpayers' money here in the city of Victorville. What we're after is the best and final offer.
Comparing apples-to-apples, I'd like to bring to your attention that cash and a buyer that doesn't even have a commitment for a loan is a huge difference. No loan commitment should be a red flag, one, and then, two, the lender will always require a request for repairs. If they go through with their appraisal and items need to be done, it would be required before they could get a loan. So, I would just like to bring that to your attention. A 30-day close, 120-day close, they're going to become across issues with their lender when they try to get a loan, if there's problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Mayor Protem, and not to get into particulars that I, information regarding the buyer that I think should be considered proprietary, but we have done some due diligence to verify the ability.
Take that just a little, please.
We have done due diligence on the buyer before making the recommendation to at least have an assessment as to their ability to perform in the closing of the escrow, and at this point in time, we do believe there's an ability to perform and close on the escrow, and that's part of the consideration that goes into the recommendation.
It's up to you what you want to do. I hear the possibility of a motion by Councilmember Negretti or Councilmember Cox.
Just for the record, this isn't a public conversation. The public that have come, they're, they submitted a card, they were given three minutes. This back and forth shouldn't be happening. It doesn't happen at your board meetings, Joe. I know you know that. So, I'm just getting uncomfortable with the number of times if things don't feel like they're going their way, they're going to send someone else down here to come and lobby the council further.
Mr. Robertson is absolutely correct, except for one thing. We didn't ask for a five-year warranty, and that's the only reason I want to come up. You're absolutely right. And our board means I wouldn't allow it, but if it was really important, you know, we allow so many people, and I ask the board to do things, because at the end of the day, I'm there as a trustee of the fine college of Victor Valley to be sure we do the right things. And all I'm trying to do is be sure that our facts, I think, as everybody has said tonight, that we're, you know, we're matching lemons, the lemons, oranges, oranges, that's all. But, you are absolutely correct about coming back and forth.
Yeah, and I recalled it actually as a 10-year warranty.
And I do appreciate the fact that you've allowed us to come forward tonight.
Yeah, I recalled it as a 10-year warranty, actually. I got a text from a staff member saying it was five years. We certainly can take a look at the documents that were provided.
I've never seen a five-year warranty in a building sale ever. So, I just, just to help each one of us.
I think finally, just to address the one point that we haven't addressed yet with respect to the question or comment regarding the financing contingency in the event, and certainly, we, it's our prerogative to consider any conditions that the bank imposes or any requests that the bank imposes, and certainly, if the bank were to come back, say, and ask for improvements, we have it within our ability to consider that. We also have our, have it within our ability to reject that as well. Right now, what's up for consideration is the item as presented, as we currently have compared to the other offer, to the extent, for whatever reason, during the course of the next 120 days, things change, become different. Certainly, we'd bring that back to this board, advise the board accordingly, and decide if we wanted to continue to proceed or actually cancel the transaction.
Are we ready to make a motion on this item?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to follow up on the discussions that I had before, and I'm going to add something personal. This is a lot larger than offers that I make, but I'm in a position of having to make an offer on a piece of property. And to ensure that my offer is considered, I spent several days with a local banking institution to make sure that I got my loan pre-approved. And as I stand right now, I have the letter in hand. I don't have to wait and put a contingency on anything, and that bothers me. With the information, and I think that all parties involved have been extremely honest in their presentation, but obviously, it's a different story, and I know that the attorney and the manager have worked through this carefully. My recommendation, my motion, is that we refer this matter to the city attorney and the city manager to look at this issue, have a meeting if necessary to iron this out to see who's correct, and do we move ahead with a contingency offer or the cash offer, and which one is best, best for this community, for these citizens, and bring it back to the council at the next meeting, probably without further discussion. I don't see any further discussion, but I'd like to see that occur. That would be my motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy opposed.
And I think understood in that motion is meetings as soon as absolutely possible so that there's no further delay for any of the parties, including the city.
Okay, so, we move on to D6. City council meeting cancellations. Madam Clerk, will you read the recommendation?
This would be a recommendation that the city council consider canceling the July 7th, August 4th, and September 1st regular city council meetings.
Madam Mayor, just by way of reminder and letting Councilman Negretti know, last summer, we ended up canceling a couple of meetings because of 4th of July holiday and because of Labor Day. And ultimately, we ended up having a couple of public hearings that were scheduled, the first meeting in August, which conflicted with the national night out that the Victorville Police Department puts on. And at that point in time, I mentioned that I was going to bring this back to the council in spring, early summer, before these months, so that we could consider simply canceling the first meetings in July, August, and September. We tend to slow down a little bit over the summer for a lot of different reasons with the number of items that we have, and with the conflicts with national holidays at the beginning of each, of two of the months, and then annual conflict with national night out, we'd recommend just simply canceling these meetings so that everyone can plan their summers.
Are we in favor of canceling these dates? We have a motion.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by?
I'd like to say, though, that if there's an urgent matter, even though we've said we're not having the meeting, you can always have a special meeting if there's a demand for it.
Correct.
That's correct.
That's correct. And we are also working with the council. And we are also working with the council on scheduling some workshops as well. We could still consider one of these dates if that works out best for everybody, or it might be some other day of the week even.
Okay, thank you.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to item D7.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to have to stand on this one as well, as I still own property too close to the mall to participate on this item, so step out.
That first word, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right. Mace Ridge?
Mace Ridge.
Mace Ridge.
Assistance payment number two. Mall Victor Valley Development Agreement. Madam Clerk, will you read the recommendation?
This would be for the city council to authorize assistance payments as provided for in the development agreement with Mace Ridge Victor Valley LLC, and authorize an additional appropriation in the amount of $57,697 from unrestricted general fund balances. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries with...
I vote. I spoke too late, but I was voting aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Cox abstaining.
Item D8. Appointment of Michael Stevens to Legislative Review Committee. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The, the recommendation that these, this item is from Mr. McEckern. He is requesting to appoint Michael Stevens to the Legislative Review Committee. All advisory committee appointments require a majority approval of the city council members.
Yeah, and, and to that point, I just would like to note that Mr. Stevens is actually here in the audience tonight. Thank you, Mike, for being here. As I indicated previously, when we had an agenda item before us, that I had requested the council consider supporting a bill that was before the state legislature. It was abundantly clear that perhaps these types of items, as well as the original intent of the Legislative Review Committee, to look at ordinances within the city of Victorville as, as they come to the city council, how they might be changed, amended, improved upon, as well as requests from federal legislators, our, our federal state senators or, and/or congress representatives, requests that we support legislation, that it go through a process, be vetted as to whether or not it's appropriate for the council to take a position of supporting or opposing, or just clearly staying out of it, for that matter. In a lot of cases, probably, that's the best course of action. But in any event, I think with all the requests that we seem to be getting these days, how much legislation that's going on at the state level that I know that we track as it, as it affects former redevelopment in our city, as well as legislation that goes on at the federal level that might ultimately affect the city, that was my ultimate request for the, the reinstatement of this committee. And I'd ask the council tonight to appoint Mr. Michael Stevens to that committee. And I, I believe we have several other resumes that have come in, of people that are interested in serving in this capacity, and I hope that the council can fill those positions posthaste.
I believe Mr. Negretti is also prepared to make an appointment to the committee tonight as well.
Correct.
Did you, go ahead.
Oh, yes, I submitted a little later Craig Fabrizio as well for the Legislative Committee. It's a revision to your...
Correct.
So, based upon that, I, I'd go ahead and make the motion and make those two appointments.
Second.
What was the other appointment?
My appointee would be Craig Fabrizio, and the revision...
I've seen, yeah, I saw this. Can we vote on them separately?
Together, we can vote, they can...
Vote together or separately. Right now, the motion is to combine them together. You could request a substitute motion.
Separately.
Okay, then I'll at least make the motion to approve the appointment of Michael Stevens to the Legislative Review Committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy voting no.
The second one is Mr. Negretti's.
Second nomination.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next one is Mr. Negretti's appointee, and that was, what's the name?
That's done.
That one's all done now.
Oh, 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 yes. Oh, we did both at the same time?
At this point in time, while each of the council members may suggest, all council members must vote, I've made no suggestion, and I'm not prepared to do so yet. Hopefully, within the next meeting, I'll have a name for, for the council to consider.
I will do the same. Okay, we move on to item D9. Propose submittal of used oil payment program grant, cycles five, fiscal year 2015, 2016. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
This would be to adopt resolution number 15-053 to authorize the submittal of a used oil payment program grant in designating the city manager as a signature authority.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D10. First Amendment to Professional Management Agreement, Sierra Golf Management, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
For the record, the reason council members Kennedy and Cox left the dais is because they have property on the golf course and therefore have a potential conflict.
Correct. This would be to approve the First Amendment to Professional Management Agreement with Sierra Golf Management, Inc.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I just want to call to your attention a typo that's actually in the staff report, but it is correct in the actual amendment document. It's on page two, second paragraph, 1, 2, 3, 4, four lines from the bottom of that second paragraph, references a $6,358 number, and that actually should be a monthly amount. It's properly referenced in the amendment, but for some reason not caught in the staff report, so I did want to at least bring that to your attention so that it didn't confuse your review. Other than that, this item was presented as a part of the budget last week and was approved, so we've actually accounted for it in the upcoming fiscal year. Effectively, what this does is amends the way we operate with Sierra Golf Management for the year two. We're letting the remaining part of the contract prevail, but we've had some great progress, or at least we've realized great progress with respect to the physical conditions that they've helped manage. It's been slow on the business side, both in the golf shop and certainly on the concession side. We do believe we'll have an announcement fairly soon on the concession side to help improve and get something a little bit more solid and stable in there. And we believe that once we're able to do that, get somebody established, concessionaire in there established, then we'll be able to achieve the larger goals of the, of the original contract. So, therefore, recognizing that we're not there yet completely with our full operation, this amendment allows for a monthly management fee to be drawn just for this year two, and then we'll revisit year three once we get stabilized.
Very well.
I'll go ahead and move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox and Mr. Kennedy absent.
Wearing out the hinges on that door tonight.
Update on focus group.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We put this item on the agenda through request of Councilmember Negretti. He and I had actually exchanged emails a few weeks ago. He was asking for a status update, and because there's already two members of the council that are on that focus group, I couldn't discuss it. However, I believe that's why he put it on this agenda, was because with all five of us in an open meeting, I, I then can discuss it, and I think you may have some comments about it as well, Eric, I don't want to put words in your mouth. So, just as, by way of an update, the council formed the focus group last fall, I want to say maybe September-ish. At that point in time, Councilmember McEckern and Councilmember Vias were the primary members of that focus group, with Councilmember Kennedy as an alternate. Because of the election, we knew that Councilmember Vias would be going off of that committee, sorry, focus group. I keep calling it a focus group because if it were a committee, it would have different rules and regulations and possibly get bogged down in red tape, so that's why we termed it a focus group. During the last six or seven months that they've been meeting, it's only been a handful of meetings, two or three, but I think everyone involved has been pleasantly surprised with compromises that have been met. It resulted in significant changes to our design standards earlier this spring that were supported completely by the Building Industry Association following that focus group meeting. We had originally intended on having three items of discussion, or three discussions, one being the design standards, which we thought was probably the easiest and turned out to be. The next item we thought we would be discussing was planned unit developments and those requirements. And then the third one we thought we would get to would be setbacks and lot sizes. Because it became an issue in and around the election, we decided to move the lot size and setback issue next in line, and we had one very productive meeting where we came to some good compromises. There's been a little bit of follow-up between the building industry and staff, and we need to call another meeting to discuss those, that follow-up. Unfortunately, the changes were material, whereas after the first focus group meeting, there were minor changes that were made, and it was able to go through the planning commission. Changes requested by the BIA after the compromise were material in nature, so we need to have another meeting. And that's kind of where we are right now, is waiting to schedule that. We were attempting to get it scheduled before I went on several trips DC and, and to the Shopping Center Show, and we just couldn't get it done in that time. So, now that we're done with the budget, looking forward to having another meeting to get those remaining issues ironed out. I know last month, the building industry reached out to Councilmember McEckern to request some information for the next item, which is the planned unit developments. They want a little bit more information before the meeting starts, and we're happy to provide that. So, that's my status update, Eric. I don't know if you had any, any other issues you wanted to bring up or have any questions, or if any council members have any questions at this point.
Sure, thank you, and I appreciate that, and I'd also like to hear from the other council members here, because as I saw that issue develop in the newspapers and heard a lot about it, there were a lot of assumptions and statements, some of them sensational, talking about crime and things that just don't correlate to the issues, the reason why the focus group was meeting. That was past old guidance from an old council. So, if I'm looking at the issues at hand, if there was some recommendation from this focus group, I'd be curious to see what it is, but I didn't want to have that meeting or that focus group remain, just to have it. I'm not sure that this council has given any particular guidance, or if there's some need, if it's not broken, don't fix it, kind of thing. So, from my perspective, I'm not looking for any recommendations from this group. I believe what we have is sufficient. I, I think we had made a statement earlier here tonight, and it's true that we have a great working relationship with Walmart and some of the other successful stakeholders in the desert. And to single out a particular industry segment and change assumptions that projects are negotiated on, that's a big thing, and that does not support employment growth. That does not, that is not saying that you support development or growth. So, I think it's a slippery slope. I just want to make sure that this council, if there's some issues that need to be rectified, that they're addressed and brought back, and if there's not, I'm not seeking any particular guidance from a focus group. And so, that's what I'm, that's all I wanted to say, and look forward to any recommendations or any other comments that any of the council members have.
Comment, my understanding is that the meetings have gone very well. On recommendation one, it's already gone to the planning commission, they adopted those. Recommendation two is ready to go on PUDs?
Well, PUDs, we, we put last, because...
Okay.
Lot size and setbacks became an issue during the election, so we wanted to get that off the table. And I think that we're very close on that issue. We came to a compromise. There's been, I'll say, a backtracking, and we need to have that discussion to finalize it. But I don't know that it's a long discussion at this point. It's more a matter of having two council members, two planning commissioners, as well as members of the BIA and members of city staff. It can be difficult to schedule sometimes, as you can imagine with that many people trying to attend a meeting. So, all the meetings are recorded, they're, it's public information what's discussed. And if anyone is ever curious about how those meetings have gone, it'd be very easy to provide a copy of that, and you can listen in if you will.
I, I just have to agree that they should keep moving and not let this lag.
My understanding is that we have a lot size standard today, and that there is no, there is no intent or action or movement that I know of to change that lot size standard. I know we've had discussions about setbacks, and my understanding was the focus group, including the BIA, agreed on the recommended setbacks from staff. As far as I know, all peace and tranquility in the valley. Am I wrong? Has somebody changed their mind?
I wouldn't say that you're wrong necessarily. The staff's recommendations were larger setbacks than ultimately was the compromise that was agreed to during the meeting. Both sides gave in a little bit, and, you know, unfortunately, what happened was we believed that we were close enough to an agreement that the BIA could work directly with the planning staff to finalize the item and take it to the planning commission, which is what had happened with the previous discussion. Upon receiving an email from the BIA, they've, I don't want to say they've rescinded, but they've, they've gone backwards from what was ultimately the compromise that was reached in the meeting. So, obviously, we have to have another meeting of some type to decide where do we go from here, whether that's a meeting of just council members and planning commissioners, or the entire focus group is something that I think we're still discussing.
As I recall, the setback agreement we reached was five and 15, but as a practical matter, that creates 20 feet of space between every house. When we met as a council and had our strategic planning meeting January of 2014, all of us were here, except Eric had not been on the council at that time, we talked about development and high-quality development. Personally, I'm not opposed to development, I'm not in favor of development. I only want high-quality development, whatever it is. I want it to be the best quality that we can create in this desert. I think those setbacks lead to that kind of quality, so that's why I was very optimistic when I thought we had an agreement, but apparently, we don't have an agreement on that. I'm sorry.
It doesn't appear so at this point. That's why I think we need another meeting.
And just from my perspective, I would kind of echo Doug, your comments, as well as Councilmember Kennedy's comments. The last meeting that we did have, we came out of there with the understanding that the development community and staff were going to work through the issues and ultimately bring something forward to the planning commission, but there was a thought that, that there was a meeting of the minds there, and then afterwards, there was not, which, from my perspective, I'm fine with. It's just, that's what occurred in that meeting, and anybody that requests that information can get it. But I think we have to look back at why the focus group was created. There was, there was an understanding at the staff level based upon the strategic planning that we did, and they came forward with a proposal to increase lot sizes with the understanding that's kind of where the council was at. We soon found out that council wasn't there, and so, out of that, the focus group was created to kind of deal with these development issues and try to get to the best point... issues and try to get to the best point and the compromise between the development community and the city. And we've made some tremendous strides there. I mean, obviously, we're not agreeing on everything, but I think we've made, we've made some inroads. We do have some work to do, whether or not we'll get anywhere. But without a focus group, staff would just likely bring something forward to the planning commission, ultimately ends up in the lap of the city council without that discussion occurring between staff, our planning, planning commission, members of the city council before it even gets to this point. And so I think for that reason, the focus group has been important. If the council thinks that the focus group ought to go away, that's to the purview of the council. But from my perspective, obviously, there has been benefit to it. That's the reason it was created. The council directed, directed that that occur. So I would suggest that it stay in play, just so we can work through those issues. Otherwise, I think we're likely to have things just fall in our lap that we probably otherwise would likely not have fallen our lap before going through the proper process.
One final comment. I know Mr. Negretti has been very interested in bringing a strategic planning session back to the council and having it. And I know, having polled each of you, that you're all so interested in that. I've been reticent to schedule that until after the lot size and setback discussion is completed, just because my fear is that if we try to have that while that is still on the table somewhere, that it will have four hours of discussion of lot size and setbacks and not make progress. So I'm hopeful that if we can get this issue resolved relatively quickly over the summer, that we can then have a new strategic planning session to update what we did in January of 14 and also incorporate any of Mr. Negretti's.
Doug, is there a reason you continue putting lot size in the same sentence with setbacks?
Well, we.
I thought that's a dead issue.
At the focus group it is.
At the focus group it is, but at this point, it has to come back to the council to be killed once and for all. So we do it because it's, they're related issues. The setbacks and the lot size are interrelated to each other. That's how we got into the quagmire that we did with that becoming the focus. Sorry for the double there. But the focus of the whole discussion became lot size, which was completely unintentional.
I just want to say thank you to council member Kennedy and council member McHeckren for their comments. And council member Kennedy's latest or last comment is exactly why I brought this up, because as someone who basically was in the building industry for more than 10 years, when you say things like setbacks and you say things like lot sizes need to be looked at, well, you know, that goes back, wait a minute. Now, these subdivisions, some people don't like them, and I understand that. We have a number of housing opportunities available for people in the desert. You don't like smaller lot sizes. You can move to Apple Valley and have as much land as you want. But I prefer what I prefer, and other people prefer that. So but, but asking an industry to change its best practices and go against existing guidelines and standards, there's second and third order effects here that need to be considered. Because when you talk about increasing the lot size, now that piece of land that that person made an investment in is going to yield less of a return. Same thing with setbacks. And that's the thing, when I hear that, setbacks are going to, if you increase the setbacks between houses, now you're talking about a smaller house. And instead of having a 55 or 60-foot wide house, now you're talking about a shorter house or increase the lot size. So I think the terminology is, for me, it's interesting. I just was looking for direction from this council, and so that we could be unified in our approach. And I appreciate everyone's comments here today.
No, this was just an information item only.
Well, this is just for information only, so we're not making any changes here. Very well. Then we move on to public comments. Public comment on the items of interest to the public. And I remind you that you are limited to three minutes. I do have some cards. Linda Price. Come up and state your name and.
I'm going to go ahead and donate my time to Sam Yaw, if that's all right. I said, I'm going to go ahead and donate my time to Sam Yaw, if that's all right.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Good evening, council mayor and mayor pro town. My name is Sam Yaw. I'm a property owner with my fiancee, Ms. Linda Price. We've been in Victor Valley, or Victorville, for three years, and 14, 600 King Canyon. We just sold that March 17th, when we closed escrow and bought another property. In the process of buying that property, we searched high and low to make sure we didn't get any Melrose or HOA properties. We come over here and after we made attempts to put a fence in on our front yard, we now find out after the fact that you passed an ordinance, I think it's 2318, that prohibits anybody to put a fence in. And this is a beautiful picket scallop fence. We paid almost, what, $14,000 for the front and the back. We're told we have to rip it down. We got cited because a neighbor didn't like it. I did bring this up to one of the council in his email or Facebook page. Haven't had a chance to meet him or he me. I'm just hoping that some consideration might come in here, because if you passed it on March 1st, which Matt, one of the city clerks, told us. We got keys on March 17th. We put the fence in shortly after. We should be allowed some consideration for no disclosure from either a realtor or Chicago title, nothing. So that's all I'm asking. Little consideration here, maybe grandfathered in, or variance, whatever the term is. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Thank you. The next one is, I believe it's Dr. Ronke Ogley.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Ronke Ogley. I've been in Victor Valley, or in the high desert generally, since 1999, I believe. I started on Fort Owen and left the military and came out here to live in Victorville because I love the city. I have watched Victor Valley develop so much, so well, from a population of about 46,000 in 2000, year 2000, to an estimated population of 121,000 right now. The city is developing fast. People are moving in. But there's one thing that has not kept pace with the level of development of the city, and that is the transit station. The transit station has remained and looks like a transit station built in the 60s, or even far back. Commuters are made to sit outside in the sun and wait for their buses. The transit station only opens at certain hours and closes its doors. Even though buses are still running, they're dropping people off, and people are getting on the buses and going wherever, wherever they want to. But they have to sit outside in 100-degree heat or in 20 degrees cold weather. And I think that is unfair on the citizens of Victorville and on tourists and visitors to our beautiful city. The transit station is the first contact visitors have, commuters have, to our city, and I think we need to develop it. The last time I was at the transit station, even though the doors were open, we were told we couldn't come inside and sit inside, and it was 100, 100 degrees outside last Sunday. We could not sit inside because it is only open to customers of a restaurant that's operating inside of it. And my question was, how come a building built with taxpayers' money, maintained with taxpayers' money, how come it's not open to commuters, only to anyone who wants to buy food in the restaurant, a restaurant operated by a private business? That confounded me, and I needed answers to that. And as a result, I wrote the Desert Dispatch. I put posts on Facebook. I wanted to find answers, but somebody suggested.
You have 30 seconds.
I come here. Thank you. Updating our transit station is of paramount importance. Not only would it bring revenue to the city, it will improve transportation in the city, because people will want to ride the buses more to and from work, especially people who commute down the hill and have to come back late in the night. Somebody like me, I'm a professor at University of Redlands. Sometimes I don't want to drive down the hill and come back at 10:00 PM. I'd rather take a bus. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next person is Dorothy Miller.
Hello, mayor and council people. I have a little problem. We've gotten our water bills for years paid to the city of Victorville. Well, I find out now, which I don't know how long ago you did it, because I don't pay any attention to the new bill, because it's always just send it into the city, or drop it off at the city, which I usually drop mine off, because I'm usually hit the beans until lately. And now, we hire locally, we, we do everything supposedly locally now. What's going on? This is not local. The new water things are not local. We're sending our things down to LA. Don't we have people here in the city that's doing their job? Why do we have to send it to LA? This is really bothering me. The city's got so much money, they can send it down there and let them do it. We have people up here that really needs jobs, and we have to go down the hill to get our help. If you guys can't hire people that is qualified to do this, then we've got to do something about it. We really have to do something, because this is completely out of control. And you hire locally, you pay your money up here, you stay up here. This is what the city wanted. This isn't what the people want, hiring people down there. And it's, we people get water bills. And there's one that I really want to comment on. The water bill comes in the trust's name. The water bill comes in the people's name. I'm not going to tell you who it is, but I know it's absolutely positive. And the same bill, same amount, and then it's always delinquent. Now, does that tell you anything? It just really bothers me, these things that's going on. We've been here too many years to have stuff like this going on. And, you know, if you guys can't take care of it, then somebody's going to have to take care of it, because not good. How many more things are we sending down there? I know a long time ago, several years ago, we wanted to send the standby, not the standby.
You have 30 seconds.
You wanted to send down the hill the storm drain fees. And we said, no, 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 no. Something happens, we need the water up here, or money up here, to take care of the water. I don't know. It might still be going down the hill, because we're changing things around, and people don't catch it. I didn't catch this, because it's still the green bill. I write my check. I check the bill. But I don't, I bring it down here to the city and drop it in.
Your time is up.
Anyway, we need to get this taken care of, and we need to get it taken care of properly, and start getting people up here to work instead of people down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maggie Low.
Good evening, once again, Madam Mayor and Council. Boy, it's been a long evening. Let me first say thank you so much, city manager, Mr. Doug Robertson. Thank you, Jesus. I was sitting in the audience, and I'm like, how long are these people going to walk back and forth and debate? And I'm thinking about the protocol, which I've learned a little bit about over time. And you can trust me, right now, Carol Lee's got me down to the second, and I'm not going to get any more than that, as it should be. Because if I can't complete today, I'll be back in two weeks. So thank you so much for that. And Mr. Negretti, directly to you, sir, I was here, as you know, last Tuesday on the special council meeting on the CalPERS issue in support of the employees. I think I left you and maybe the rest of the council members with the wrong impression. The impression I was trying to make was not the one that you had said of entitlement, but it was a one of my observation over many years of how government entities work. When times are good, it's all fat. And when times are bad, it's down to the bone. And again, I look for a balanced approach. And I recognize that each and every one of you have a tremendous duty and difficult job to make these major decisions that you know so very well affect the lives of so many. So I do appreciate, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And I did vote for you, by the way, and Mr. McHeckren. So on the, on my issues, which are never changing, I got to tell you, I've, what's my time, Carol Lee?
You have 1 minute 23 seconds.
Dang. Okay, so for the last few years, I have been grinding the pants off of the Victorville Police Department about my traffic complaints, which are legitimate, they know they're legitimate, my noisy neighbors, the firecrackers, the list goes on and on. And it's, it's, I'll tell you the truth, there's hardly a high desert dispatcher that does not know me on a first-name basis, along with probably a quarter or third of the deputies at the station, because I'm blowing up their phone lines. And I got to tell you, they've been trying to tell me for a long time, and I'm a little on the hard-headed side. They've been trying to tell me for a long line, a long time, I'm looking in the wrong direction. And so I made a commitment to Captain Lucia, I'm going to climb off of them and climb onto you all, about what do we need to do.
Do you like that? You have 30 seconds.
That, I've said it, see, I told them through a message from a secretary, but now I've made it official, and he's going to hold me to it. So, you know, I need to know what to do for us to get more deputies up here. The bottom line is, we don't have enough. They can't patrol out in my area. It's not priority calls. But these are still nuisances and concerns that need to be addressed. How much time, Carol Lee?
Five seconds.
Be back in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. The last card that I have is Donald, I'm sorry, I cannot read the last name. Donald, what?
I think he's already spoken.
No, it's. Oh, you already spoke. Okay, thank you.
You can speak, you can speak. You can't get tired, or somebody will bring 50 people and speak for an hour and a half.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have reports from our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sometimes it's difficult for the public who don't come to meetings real often, that when they give public comment, the council is prohibited by law from addressing those comments during the meeting because it wasn't agendized. I will ask that our city engineer and possibly the planning and development director reach out to you before you leave tonight, get you a card to come in and meet with them to talk about the fence issue. It's more of a staff issue than a council issue. And then I know that the one gal who already left, the department head has already made contact with her regarding the transportation center.
Yes, they did.
And he'll be meeting with her, I'm sure. And then regarding the question on our bills going to LA, I know it's been explained a couple of times, but there's actually a highly efficient automated processing center there that processes those bills much more quickly than, than our staff can do. So we actually save a tremendous amount of money for the ratepayers of the water district by sending those bills to LA. But let me assure you, those get deposited into the water district's bank account, not into some LA bank account. And remind me, Keith, to call Sheriff McMahon regarding performance evaluation for Captain Lucia. And then finally, and some good news, we had a riverbed cleanup that was coordinated by the HOPE team through the county sheriff, had tremendous staff support from our public works department, our development code enforcement departments, and several others. It's getting late, and everybody wants to hear me stop talking. But anyway, that cleanup netted about 85 tons of waste pulled out of the riverbed area, and it's ongoing. That's just what we did that day. I know that we saw the public works crews out there working the piles that were made by the volunteers, and we will be doing that probably for another day or two. And once we have an updated figure as to how many tons of waste was pulled out of the riverbed to help clean up the city, I'll.
the riverbed to help clean up the city, I'll report that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Councilmembers, anything?
Just one thing, I'm talking with a friend today who lives in Wrightwood, and she was saying that she read an article in, I guess it was a local paper in Wrightwood, about the Victorville mayor, and what an interesting story it was, and what a great ambassador Gloria Garcia is for our city, I just wanted to compliment her.
Oh, thank you. That's very nice. Anything else?
I'd like to see that article.
Yeah, I would too, I didn't, please do share it with us. I just have a couple of comments. I know, and perhaps staff had brought this up before, but we have this Victor Valley Economic Development Magazine that came out, that features some stories about the high desert, and done by the Victor Valley Chamber of Commerce. A great piece for us to share with folks that visit our area, to talk about what we do here locally. But along those same lines, our Assistant City Manager, Keith Metzler, penned an article that ended up in the NAOP magazine, which goes all over the world, as I understand, about former George Air Force Base and SCLA, and Keith, great job, I think this does a lot to get our name out there internationally, and talks about all the great things going on out at SCLA, and all the jobs that have been created, and the wonderful businesses that we have out there. And finally, not that the council cares, but yours truly was elected as president of Sandbag last week, and I take over, I take over position of the organization on Thursday, so hopefully I'll represent you well.
You will, we believe in that. Congratulations, that's wonderful. Anything else? Nothing else before this council, so this meeting is adjourned.